Good evening. We're going to call our council meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Now, Councilmember Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
And if you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Barich.
Good evening, council. For the benefit of the audience, my name is George Barich. I'm a former city councilman here in Kattati, and I'd like to speak on the issue of the Pledge of Allegiance. I want to remind those who have not heard this story before that the Pledge of Allegiance was under attack here in 2009 when I was on the council by a council member, Bob Coleman, who suggested that we place on a future agenda item that maybe it was time that we remove the Pledge of Allegiance from these proceedings. And the fact is, I was not able to respond to the city council at the last meeting when Mr. Landman erroneously gave a play-by-play description of what I said during that meeting. And I want to be able to defend myself tonight. Mr. Landman went ahead and conveyed what was essentially hearsay. He took from a news reporter what that person evidently quoted me as saying. But worse than that, Mr. Landman failed to describe and report to the audience what other communications I made during that issue. Didn't report as to my body language, me shaking my head from side to side when Mr. Coleman brought this up, when I held my head down with my head, with my hand, when he even suggested us considering removing the Pledge of Allegiance. The discussion I had with Mr. Coleman at the break, that I met him halfway, that I knew how to compromise and work with the council, and I met the council halfway in voting to remove the moment of silence, but I stood fast and let him know that I was not going to go along with any removing of the Pledge of Allegiance. If I was outvoted, I was going to respect it, but I was not going along with it. But Mr. Landman's a little sloppy in his research, so I want to correct the record for that because evidently everything Mr. Landman says on the record, he thinks is truth. Well, I would say to you, Mr. Landman, tell the truth, Mark, and stop lying, okay? Secondly, I bring up the fact that the council in their Pledge of Allegiance states "one nation under God," "for liberty and justice for all." And I've asked you before, I think it's high time this council explained to the public whether you believe in God and whether you actually mean what you say, or whether you're just giving lip service to those phrases and just trying to be politically correct. I think that's worthy of discussion, and I want to see if these city leaders here have the ability and the integrity to discuss this at some future date. Thank you, council. Good luck tonight.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on the Pledge of Allegiance? Seeing none, I will close public comment on the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might comment briefly?
You may.
Thank you. What I read at that last meeting was in fact a transcription by Jim Sweetie from the Press Democrat because of the time you complained that you were misquoted, something that seems to happen with a lot of regularity, unfortunately for you again. I'm sure that is very, very clear, and it is true. No theatrics, no visual theatrics were listed in there in this newspaper story, but the words count. The words we say count, and your words were, "I can see the handwriting on the wall. The issue of the Pledge of Allegiance is facing its suit. I don't think there's any doubt that's where we're going, and if we're going, so be it." You also said, "If it's removed from our bodies beginning ceremonies, I'll stand outside and make my Pledge of Allegiance to the flag that's out in the front steps. I don't need to be in here to do it." Now, I don't have a problem with that position or any other position, but I think trying to describe that now to the public, to reinvent history, to say that was a full-throated defense of the flag, once again, isn't exactly the truth, and that's why I quoted, since you keep bringing up, posthumously, Mayor Coleman, I thought I'd remind everybody what he used to say to you quite often. Tell the truth, George, and so I'll say the same thing to you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Landman. And now let's move to the approval of the minutes.
Move to approve?
All in favor?
I sent an email about a correction. It was that I had made a point about the Roberts, I think it was the Roberts rules. Tamara, do you remember that email? It wasn't quoted right. I did make the, I asked for the city's attorney's opinion, and then you went and asked, you directed her, it was on the ADA accommodation now, thinking about it, and it's completely quoted wrong in how the order went. It just says I commented, and that wasn't true. I asked that if we take action of having the attorney Donahue look into the, and she agreed that, actually, it wasn't, sorry, I'm a little confused tonight. It was on, each item on the agenda has to be, has to be heard, and it was on the consent calendar, and that I quoted, I knew that every agenda item needs to have a public comment. And she confirmed my point, that every agenda item, because you had limited me to three minutes. And then in the minutes, it says, I commented it as one comment, and there was two items. So it should be three, it should have been three minutes and three minutes, which was six minutes. You just have me down for one. And it should be corrected that in the rules of procedure that all, we can have a public comment on every agenda item.
Thank you, Ms. Alderman. Mr. Donahue, would you perceive that we would need to have an amended motion regarding the minutes?
I do not. I had a little bit of trouble following the argument. I was looking through the minutes to see exactly what the issue was, and based on what I'm reading tonight, I don't see a legal need to make a change.
And would you concur?
Could we have a little clarification on consent, please?
If I understand it correctly?
It is.
Okay. Go ahead.
I had looked at the language that currently is printed on the agenda, and I had interpreted it to mean that for each consent agenda item, there would be a separate three-minute remark. The city manager interpreted the language differently, and in rereading it, I see, felt that it was open to multiple interpretations. I understand that in the rules that are before you, that issue is clarified, and so going forward, the rule would be that you have a total of three minutes to speak on the totality of consent items that you wish to speak on. Is that correct, Amy?
And of course, that would be...
That would be starting off this meeting, since we're doing this in consent, it would be the following meeting, correct?
Correct.
So for this meeting, somebody would be able to speak in multiple consent items if they wished to?
If that is your will. That is how I interpreted the current language. Of course, you're free to disagree with my interpretation, but I thought it was less than clear, and therefore I opted for, you know, giving the three minutes.
No, I think that makes it clear at least for me. Thank you for taking the time to clarify that for us.
Ms. Alderman, you have one more question?
Just that in the email, I did cite the code that says it's each agenda item in the consent calendar, so I wanted to make sure that was known.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye. And I'm going to abstain just because I didn't get a chance to look at the whole webcast yet, so.
Thank you. So aye as well, so that will let the record reflect, three to one, or three with one abstention and one absence. Thank you. Okay, housekeeping items. Ms. Taylor?
For the benefit of everyone in attendance, please observe the following: silenced electronic devices, including cell phones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways carry sound, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that might be distracting are to be taken from the designated media area along the south wall of the chamber. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrance to the chamber. Place the completed speaker cards in the designated tray located by the city clerk. When their name is announced, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
Thank you. Mr. Barich.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. For the benefit of the community, let's review. In 2009, when I was on the city council, we had no official transcripts. We had nothing of the sort. So tell the truth, Mr. Landman. Now, I'd like to ask the council, why aren't you reading all the rules that govern you tonight? For three years, you have been dishonest in declaring house rules that the city clerk has made up without your approval, wasting time and embarrassing these proceedings. The overwhelming disruptions here have been from the city council interrupting citizens. It's the city council members who have done that who should have been escorted out. There have been double standards regarding these housekeeping rules, and even the Community Voice newspaper won't report on it. There is no media area in this room. There are no camera tripods that we've seen here for 20 years, and we are the journalists now, thanks to the Internet. If you fail to verbally state that speaker cards are purely optional, you have violated the Brown Act. The city attorney is not the last word on the law. How many lawsuits do you people have to lose before you realize she is hired to make you look good, to keep you out of legal hot water? Doesn't do that very well, but, now, I don't want these shirts and ties on the council to fool anybody here tonight. For years, these proceedings have been governed by the government code, federal civil rights laws, and Roberts Rules of Order, and you couldn't even do that right. I suggested to you, Roberts Rules for Dummies, a couple times. Too much reading for you. You guys ignored it. If it took you four years to come up with a code of conduct for these proceedings, you should be ashamed of yourself for the betterment of the community. That's a real laugh.
Thank you, Mr. Barich. Would anyone else like to discuss housekeeping items? Seeing none, I will close the public comment on housekeeping items. Now we're going to move on to announcements. The city of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Ronert Park, Kattati Regional Library host events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305, and the museum is currently open right now. Citizens interested in receiving City Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com. And recreation's back. Citizens are invited to visit the city's webpage at kattaticy.org to complete a survey letting the city know what types of programs they'd like to see offered. Thank you. And now we are going to introduce our honorary mayor, Mr. Luke Benson of Technology High School. Mr. Benson, come on up. Welcome.
Hi. I'm Luke Benson. I'm from Technology High School. I'm a junior, and I'd just like to say that it's an honor to be here. I only heard about this, actually, a couple hours ago, but I'm already really excited. And while I was, I should probably talk about myself and a couple of my interests. As a junior in high school, I'm still a bit unsure of what I'd like to pursue for college. I'm definitely sure that I want to go to college, go to a four-year university, but I don't really know what I want to do yet. I'm still exploring different career paths and opportunities. I've maintained throughout most of high school that I want to study business, and I still maintain that. But I'm also really interested in filmmaking and the arts, and yeah, so I'm still really unsure about that. As far as technology high school, I'm really happy with my education there. I think it's a great school. It's a small, sort of tightly-knit community. It's very unique, and I think it's good for students that like small, closed environments. And it's also very helpful for students that want to branch out, because as you may know, there's a college surrounding Technology High School, which is very useful if you want to explore sort of the college activities. I helped in a college play theatrical production, which was an interesting experience. That's about it about me. Do you have any questions?
Luke, thank you very much for sharing that. I think what we'll do is go through the council and see if they have any questions for you or any comments, and we can start with Councilman Landman.
Well, I'll start by welcoming you here again, Luke. I understand you only had a few hours' notice, and that's perhaps the best way to do this, but nevertheless, I thought it was a very interesting presentation in that what I usually see over the years is people seem to have, young people seem to have a pretty good idea of where they think they want to go, and yet we know in practice and life that where we wind up, and I don't care what our age is, you know, is usually not where we plan. So I think that you're on the right track of having some general ideas of where you want to go. You mentioned business, film, the arts, and it sounds like you've been involved in all of that a little bit, so I think that's a great direction, because I think as you work in all these things, finding a direction, the path will open in front of you, and it could be some intersection of all these things. You might find a certain segment that takes talents and experience that you will pick up in your education for both of those, and it could be both very renewative and also satisfying career path for you. So I'm going to wish you the best and look forward to seeing you come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
So you talked about your school and all the activities that you do at school. I was curious as to if you had any other interests outside of school?
Outside of school, as I said, I wanted to pursue filmmaking, so I've been looking into that. The Junior College in Santa Rosa is a nice opportunity to explore different fields. I took a psychology class there. As far as in Ronert Park, there's, or in Kattati, there's quite a bit of things that I've done. I've lived here for, I think, more than eight years now. I've been here most of my whole life. And while there's no really specific activities that I've done and stuck to, there's definitely a lot of activities that are offered that I'm interested in and that I'd like to check out in the future.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I think, as Councilmember Landman pointed out, I think that it's nice that you have an open mind and open to exploring different things and opportunities that come before you, and I think that you'll do well, and thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. Councilmember Skilman?
Thank you. So welcome tonight. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. I'm glad that you're able to be here tonight and be our honorary mayor, and my son has actually been looking into technology high school, so I've been learning a little bit about it, so I'm glad to hear good things from a student who's already attending, so that's great. And also, I wanted to echo what my fellow councilmembers had said. What I wanted to add to, though, is that sometimes you can end up meshing two different areas that you don't think really mix together. Like, I met a gentleman who does 3D rendering of, it sounds kind of gross, but of operations so that patients can see, like, this is what it's going to be like when, you know, and it's cartoon, so it's not gross or graphic or anything. But it's just interesting, because you could probably end up mixing, I know a lot of people too who do educational films for people who are in business, like how to conduct a meeting, how to, you know, things like that. So it's just, that's great that you're open and that you've got both sort of, you know, business sort of logical stuff, but then also the arts. That's great to be able to have both interests running parallel, so I'm looking forward to seeing you again in two weeks and seeing what information you want to bring back. And then I also wanted to ask if you had anybody in the audience you wanted to shine the spotlight on and introduce to us tonight?
Well, I would like to give thanks to my dad right here. He's been a big part of my life, of course, and he's really helped me throughout everything, especially with my academics and things like that. If, maybe next time when I come here, I'll bring a few more people just so they can experience this. I know that I've never really experienced this before. I've only been in City Hall once or twice, and to come to a council meeting and see how things sort of take place is very interesting, and it's a good educational opportunity. I think a lot of people should know about. I really had a good time. Thank you all for having me.
Well, you've done a really good job of public speaking, by the way, so thank you very much for being here tonight, and I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman, or Councilman Skilman. Luke, you're not off the hook yet. Thanks so much for coming out on such a short notice, and we appreciate you being engaged and willing to participate in that. Traditionally, we ask our honorary mayors if they would go back to their peers and kind of ask them what they think that the city might be able to do and offer to them as well as what they might contribute to the city. We are looking down the road to hopefully, if things go well, to resurrect our teen center that we used to have here over at the old classrooms. And if you could go ahead and survey some of your friends and peers and people at technology and see what you might be able to bring back in the next meeting, that would be great. I think that, one of the questions I did want to ask you regarding Tech High, and you kind of alluded to it a little bit when you were helping in a production, a play production over there, do you find that there is an absence of not being on the regular high school campus, or do you enjoy the college campus? Tech High is still over there at Sonoma State?
Yeah, Tech High is located in Salazar Hall, sort of in the middle of Sonoma State, and I know that a lot of students feel nervous and almost overwhelmed when they, on their first day at Tech High, but I think as for me and as for everyone in my class, they grow to like the college campus almost immediately. It offers a lot of things, just in, like, every day for lunch, right? We can go to the commons and just exploring Sonoma State campus is also really interesting. Sonoma State has a really beautiful campus. I know a lot of people, especially the track team, they go and runs there, so it offers a lot to the high school student, definitely, and I don't think anything should be wary of the college campus. As far as the survey, I'm actually really happy to do that. I've heard a lot of things about, from my students, about different recreational activities, and the teen center you mentioned, I think would be, a lot of students would be very interested in that, and very likely to respond and engage in some conversation about that.
Terrific, and you might remind them that we also have the survey online with our Department of Parks that we're also resurrecting, so that would be great if you can encourage that, and we'll look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks, and thank you so much for coming out.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Barich?
Thank you, sir. What a wonderful dissertation by that young man. Nicely done, but I want these kids to understand that this city council are hardly role models. They bully. We have a drunk driver here, habitual drunk driver as mayor.
We are talking about the honorary mayor program?
Yes, we are.
We're talking about the honorary mayor program? We're not slamming people on the council.
You guys break the law. I want the kids to know that. I want the kids to know that you step on people's rights.
Stick to the topic, please.
I want to tell these kids that these shirt and ties that they see up here should not fool anybody. These councilors are bought and sold politicians, can't be trusted. They don't want to hear opposing points of views from these kids, and someday, these kids, you're going to find out yourself, that if you try to oppose the city council, they will try to destroy you. Marching these young kids up here, Mr. Mayor, is just a bunch of political theater. This is why other cities don't do this. I've talked to other cities about it. This city hall is not a place of honor. Ever since I left the city council, it has been a house of shame. You people, you lie, you lie to these kids, you cheat, you break the law, you violate people's civil rights, and you have never apologized for any of it. You throw citizens' complaints in the garbage. You're not honoring these kids. You're using them. You tell them what you want to hear, want them to hear. When they ask critical questions, and we've seen this before, you give them the runaround. You give them a false sense of hope. These kids watch you interrupt citizens up here at the podium. Mr. Landman won't correct you. You people play the race card. You hand these kids a piece of paper when they're done, and the paper's not worth the paper it's written on. You make promises to these poor kids you have no intention of making good on. You limit the free speech to a bare minimum. You've never followed Roberts Rules of Order. I advise these kids to run. Don't walk from these proceedings. I don't understand how any school administrator would put a kid up to this, knowing what really goes on in these chambers, week in, week out, month after month. If you don't grow up to be good little Soviets in this town, watch your back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the honorary mayor program? Thank you. Seeing none, I'll close citizens' business. And I will make a comment regarding honorary mayor program. I think it's a wonderful program. I think it exposes people to what runs the local community and local city council, and not everything is pleasant regarding city council meetings. Most things are, and most citizens are very appreciative, and hopefully it gives a wonderful insight into how our community is run. So, thank you. With that, we will go to approval of the final agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that on the regular calendar item five, move up to number four, and number four move down to five, so swapping the two in position, because we have, I believe we have someone in the audience for item five, which is currently item five.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Thank you. And with that, we will go to citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. And with that in mind, I will open up the... And with that in mind, I will open up the citizens' business. And just a reminder, I do have some speaker cards, but you are not obligated to complete a speaker card if you don't desire to. So Chief Frank Trainer, Rancho Odewe Fire District.
Good evening. It occurred to me, I've been here for a while, to visit you. And so I thought I would come by and say hi and ask you all that you've had time to evaluate what our firehouse looks like here and what do you think of it? Came out pretty nice. I got some nice cooperation from John Deloso and from Vicky Parker in doing that, and I was very appreciative of that. I was also appreciative of the fact that we came up with enough money to put the roof on and to do the siding. And we didn't have enough money to have it painted. And when I mentioned that to my people, they went and talked to the folks at Kelly Moore, and they got the paint donated. And our firefighters went out and painted the firehouse. I, I feel that that was kind of their gift to the city. And it's the start of whatever you're going to do downtown. It'll all be that way. So I had another thing that I came here tonight to speak about. We're doing some town hall meetings on the future of the fire district and looking at ways to ensure that the fire district can be managed by a proactive point of view rather than reactive. And ways to purchase fire apparatus and other equipment that we're, you know, trying to, to get. And we also want to show people what it is we do and what we've done to maximize the dollars that have been invested in us. And tomorrow night's meeting is going to be in Pen Grove at the firehouse there. It'll be at 7:00 PM. And next Monday, the meeting will be at our firehouse here, Station One. And that will be at 7:00 PM as well. And so I'd like to invite all the citizens and, and you folks as well and let you come and see who we are and what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Absolutely.
Would it be possible to put that information out on our website, too? And possibly get the word out on this town hall meeting since it affects our citizens?
Yeah, we could post it on our website.
I don't even know if it's possible to put out a Nixle message or not, but any methods that we have, I think that, that would be helpful to get the word out.
Sure.
And I do know I've seen the fire department is now on, on Nextdoor, on some of the Nextdoor sites, in getting that information out. And I think that that's helpful, too.
Councilman Landman?
And I'm not sure what we have in the queue for using the downtown marquee, but since we have roughly a week until the local meeting here in Cotati, that might be worthwhile, too, especially for that one. It's the main station, it's the center of town, and it's darn close to the station. So it seems appropriate to do if we can get it done. I realize it's late notice, but thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, Chief, the firehouse looks great. Karen Hudson?
Thank you for letting me come and speak. Last year, GMO Free Sonoma County had an initiative that we presented to the supervisors, asking them to vote it into law, and it would prohibit growing genetically engineered crops in Sonoma County. Right around October, the city of Cotati, the city council, sent a letter to the Board of Supervisors requesting that they put it on their agenda pursuant to the issuing of California Seed Law, AB 2470, as a, what is it called? It's a placeholder ordinance. Because there was a change in the ability to, you would not be able to vote it into law after January 1st. So you would, said you would write a letter to them suggesting that they put it in as a placeholder ordinance so that they would be able to consider it after January 1st. In the proceedings, two of the city council members voted to put it into, on the agenda, and three of them voted not to. And they suggested, the chair suggested that we take it to the voters. And so that's what we're doing right now. We have an ordinance that would prohibit growing genetically engineered crops in the unincorporated areas of Sonoma County. And we are currently collecting signatures to place it on the November 2016 ballot. I just sort of wanted to let you know what had happened, since you had written a letter. And we are hoping that possibly in the future, if we make it to the ballot, that we can request maybe an endorsement from the Cotati City Council of our ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Lori Alderman?
The reason why I was so spacey on the last one is because I have had to deal with the city all day long, and so much is in my head right now. The public nuisance property is being demolished with no notice. The only thing, when I went to this, down to the building department today, they took the old permit from October 2014, put in a new date, and that's it. There's nothing. You guys have been deceitful on this. It is, you need to, you did not notice any of the neighbors that the work is happening. You've been breaking every single law for, since the day that happened. Every, you haven't followed one building code. And you're not setting yourself up to, any building codes with this one. There, you were required to do a 10-day notice. We're here, we hear from the crew that we are, they are starting on Monday, we have, next Monday. That's not 10 days' notice. That is in the building codes. You guys need to read them. There's whole sections I've sent you. I'm tired of it. You guys need to follow the laws. And you need not to be so deceitful to, you, you set a public hearing for the 22nd on the nuisance property. You sent it to all parties except the adjacent members on January 28th. We neighbors are the most affected by all this. We are the ones that should have been, should have been noticed first. You are setting yourself up to do another illegal demolition. You know that you're negligent, and you, you were for the last year. You're just trying to cover yourself up. And this is, you're not an environment for kids. You guys, people need to know how you guys work. Because you have treated me horribly for months, and all I've done is protect my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Kirchman?
Good evening. I wanted to speak to some items regarding city center, but also citywide. I think it's necessary that you either create a municipal code or some other policy regarding vacant property, just essentially maintaining that property. There's a parcel in the center of, of the city that in the front, on the sidewalk, there is not some vomit, there's numerous spots of vomit. That's on your city sidewalk. Of course, it's the easement of a property, so there's that gray area, it's the property owner's responsibility or yours. The reality is the property owner lives in Portland, Oregon, and doesn't clean around his property. There's a large, there's alleyways on both sides that aren't maintained. And during the rains, we were fortunate enough to have a while back, the entire parking lot flooded. I thought it might be a moat to keep people from parking there, as they've been doing for 40 years. But it's ridiculous that you have enough garbage to fill the drainage and back up the entire parking lot. Next to the parking lot, there's a small wooded area that's also cluttered with debris and garbage. For more than a month, there was a television set abandoned there. I don't think the property owner did it, but the property owner isn't maintaining the property. It ventures from being just an eyesore to being a public nuisance and a danger to health and also potential fires and other circumstance. That's not the only property that's left that way, but you should generate some sort of necessity for somebody that owns property, especially if it's commercial property or, you know, any way where they're making gains and don't live anywhere near here, that somebody maintains the property. It shouldn't just be a matter of occasional weed abatement. It should be maintaining the property and cleaning it. Again, I don't think the property owner themselves are throwing things on the ground or defecating the building, but we shouldn't have to look at it every time we walk through town. Another concern, which has been in the paper, is memorials, commendations, whatever you want to call them. In La Plaza Park, there's a very nice plaque right in front of the stage, which originally was built by Mr. Polikas and associate of his Carl. And it's nice that you were nice enough to leave a plaque there so people can see who built the stage. It's unclear what Marguerite Hahn did for the park, but there's a little marker for her. And there's something that looks kind of like a planter box or a tomb, which was created for two people that were veterans. It would be nice if that was known so people really knew about it. Across the street, in the Veterans Park, is what we like to call it, there is a commendation, if you will, for Mr. Coleman Sangor. And likewise, there's one for another person that's tucked away under a tree. You should have some sort of policy so people genuinely can follow it and everyone knows what they're there for and what they did. Along the street, there are benches, along the sidewalk, rather, in front of that property and other properties. There are commendations on the bench for people that have passed. You need some sort of a policy so things are kind of consistent. Mr. Draper should have something more than a little plaque when somebody else has a plaque, yea, yee, big. It should be somewhat consistent.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchman.
Thank you.
Sky Polikas?
Hi, I'm a resident of Cotati. I'm a resident of Cotati. I live at 8165 El Rancho Drive. And I have a problem with my brother and I believe some of his friends. A few years ago, I was at home and woke up to the Cotati Police Department at the front door. They said that, my brother said that I had said something to him and his girlfriend. And I was sleeping. I didn't say anything to my brother and his girlfriend. I happened to be just put on probation at the time. It was my first day back. My older brother, BB Polikas, he had his girlfriend over for the first time. I think it was the second time I met her. And the police put the handcuffs on me and took me off to jail. And they almost gave me a year in jail. They gave me six months. I served four of those months. And since then, my brother, big brother's been terrorizing me, excuse me, while I was in jail for those four months, he started terrorizing my little brother and robbing him. My little brother had never had a problem as far as, you know, mental illness went, to my knowledge. And while I was in jail, my little brother went in and out of the mental hospital four or five times. When I returned home a month or so after serving the four months in the Sonoma County jail system, I, I noticed that my little brother was being called names like faggot and retard and nigger. And it was hard for me to do anything but sit and see over my little brother with his new mental situation he was going through. And my older brother has progressed since then. He's, he's been out of control quite a few times. He has been calling the police and telling them that I've been doing things and saying things that I haven't done. I've been picked up twice now over the last, you know, six months and taken to the mental hospital for things that I didn't set, excuse me. One of the times, I believe his friend called and said that I was climbing a tree in the park in Cotati and was taken to the mental hospital. They, the Cotati Police Department said they were, they took me to ju, the mental hospital because I had talked to them in a way that I hadn't talked to them previously. I thought that was a funny answer to give me because I never talked to anyone the way I talked to them until I talked to them. And so when I was picked up the other day, I was quite surprised. I would think that the police department would have some kind of evidence if they were going to do anything like that again to me. I've never had any mental problems. And sure enough, here they come, they said. This time, some witness, I'm assuming one of my big brother's friends.
Mr. Polikas, if I could interrupt you just for a minute. You're already over your, a lot of time. But the, the one question I had is.
May I have 10 seconds, please?
You can have 10 seconds, sir.
Okay. So they, his, his girl, his, whoever with the witness was, said I was attempting, I was saying I was going to kill imaginary people, and if I couldn't kill imaginary people, I was going to kill myself. I've never been suicidal, and that's it.
Okay. I'm not sure that this particular legislative body is set up to assist in that way, but we can certainly address it with the city manager after the meeting or at some future date, and maybe get back to you with some potential suggestions.
When, when, is there a, is there a card or something? I can come in at another time and speak to someone about this?
Absolutely. So we'll, we'll make sure you get a card from city manager, Obed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barich?
Mr. Moore, if you cannot quit interrupting citizens at the podium, I would ask you kindly to hand the gavel over to Mrs. Harvey, who knows how to conduct a meeting. And I appreciate it if Mr. Landman would also respect my time up here and correct you when you interrupt citizens. I'm worried about you, Mr. Moore. I'm worried about your health. I don't want to see what happened to Bob Coleman happen to you by ignoring the warnings and leaving us. You need to seek help for your alcoholism and give us tax repairs an ongoing, regular report on how you're doing. Because your job here as mayor is important. You now pose a threat to our community by continuing to drive drunk. The police chief knows it. The Cotati police officers know it, that I've spoken to. And the city council knows it. I have a letter here, email, from a police officer. I'm going to put it up on the board so people can see it tonight. This is an intervention, Mr. Moore. Someone needs to be the grown-up in the room and show some real leadership. You stole the last election by keeping your criminal record about your drunk-driving charges and drunken public charges under wraps. The Community Voice newspaper has covered for you. I've brought them all the information. City staff has covered for you. City attorney's covered for you. Ms. Skilman put in a couple of nice phone calls to see a plea deal help you out a few years ago. years ago, with all her friends in there, yeah, I heard about that. The Cattati Chamber of Commerce is using you. Your family is enabling you. Cheryl Nixon, a Friar Tux, doesn't care about you, Mr. Moore. The Historical Society is using you as well, Mr. Moore. Those people don't love Cattati, they use Cattati, just like you. Now, Mr. Landman made a comment about the public, about public education at the last meeting. That's all right, we'll come back to you, Mr. Moore. And he said that we should all be lucky about our public educations. Well, you know, many of us survived our public educations. Some people barely able to read and write a complete sentence after their public educations, Mr. Landman. Thank God for private educations, and it's actually not too late for you, sir. You know, being really nice and sweet to people who don't deserve it is actually very counterproductive and un-American. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I clarify something on the record?
Absolutely. Councilman Skilman.
Sure. So, I'm not sure where this idea came from, but I've never made any phone calls to anybody. I still do have friends at the DA's office, so I'm sure I would have heard rumblings if somebody I knew had been in trouble, but no, I've, I've never made any calls. I don't work at the DA's office, haven't been there for years, and frankly, I wouldn't risk my bar card, no offense, Mayor Moore. But anyway, just wanted to clarify that, but, you know, keep saying lies and hopefully eventually you'll stop. Thanks, Mr. Barich.
Anyone else like to comment on citizens' business? Seeing none, I will close citizens' business. I would just like to reiterate what Councilman Skilman has just said. If you say lies enough, hopefully you think enough people will believe it. So, I'm looking forward to another twenty meetings like that, so this should be fun.
City manager, could you give us a little bit of information on, you know, properties with problems, what process should be used in order to get those cleaned up, what is our process, so that we're clear on that? I mean, I know if I, as I've seen things astray, I usually will call City Hall, it seems to get taken care of, but I just think it would be helpful to reiterate that.
So, obviously, the easiest thing to do is just to call, contact City Hall and let somebody know, and then we can often contact the property owner and just let them know. I mean, that's usually the case, is that it's not aware of it, or, you know, especially with an absentee landowner. And that oftentimes will resolve the issue. If the, if the property owner, for whatever reason, doesn't resolve the issue, you know, private property rights are pretty strong, so, you know, the city can't necessarily just go onto people's property and do things, so there's a, there's a process in our community to deal with that, but it's a long process, and so obviously, we'd rather deal with things on the lower level, just connect, you know, contacting people directly when we hear things.
And do we have a policy for memorials in our parks?
I'd have to look into that. I don't know.
And can you share with us any information about what's going on with the nuisance property?
So, I know that the, that the current property owner hired a demolition contractor who pulled the permit today, and, and they're waiting for a permit with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District to clear so that they can start work, I believe on the week of the 22nd of February. And, you know, of course, you know, we inspect it to ensure they're following all the applicable building codes, but...
And what about the comments about noticing and noticing neighbors and noticing...
So, there hasn't been a public hearing, so there hasn't been a public hearing notice yet. You know, there was a, there was a letter sent to the property owner that we would, that we would have a public hearing on the 22nd if they didn't pull a permit and initiate work, which they appear to be doing right now, so we're in that process at the moment.
So, that's the whole thing around the twenty, the comment on the 22nd and, and the noticing, it really has to do with if they don't do what they've been asked to do?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Lehman. Just a quick follow-up, please, if I might, on the issue that was brought forward about problem properties, because I think it's an interesting one. I take your recommendation that often can be resolved with a call from a citizen or a council member or somebody. Property owners are usually responsive, but I'm curious what we have, and this might be a community development question. In that case, where we have repeated issues with a property, where we don't have a responsive property owner, obviously, this may not be something that rises to the level of public nuisance, but I think there's a compelling argument that it's detraction for the citizens and businesses in that area, and I'd just be curious what resources we might have if we can't resolve this sort of thing with those first steps.
So, I'll just start, like, you know, generally, if it rises beyond the level of simple dialogue with the owner to resolve it, we do have a nuisance abatement process that we have to, there's, you know, several steps, and it has to go before the council to find it to be in public nuisance, and it's a, and it's a long involved process. That's, I mean, that's the primary tool for abating issues on private property that...
So, there's really between voluntary helping out and following through this thing and nuisance abatement, there's really kind of a no-man's-loan between there, there's no middle ground, next step?
Or, a couple of things about that. Our process is complaint-driven, so as Damian suggested, we need to, we do drive-bys, you know, regularly that you see, but we don't always catch everything, so if a resident has seen something that hasn't been responded to, the best thing to do is to call and make a complaint with us, with the Community Development Department, when it's on private property. When it's in the public right-of-way, the call goes to Public Works. And so, then, once it's a complaint on private property, most people respond within the first letter. We send them a, what we call a courtesy notice that says, you may not be aware, this is a violation, and we give them ten days or so. Most people cure it within that. If they don't, they get a second letter with a second timeframe, a third letter with a third timeframe, and then we get into the abatement process that we've been on on School Street, so we really try our hardest to stay out of that third process because it is so time-intensive.
Okay. Well, I think that actually, I can see how the process works, and that's helpful. And I would suggest, I think the key point here is if anybody, neighbors, citizens, people visiting, find issues, certainly a call, or if you don't have time, an email to staff, and if you don't know the right staff person, whoever your council people are, I think you can do that, because we certainly know who to forward to and then follow back, so thank, thank you for taking the time to explain that.
Councilman Harvey.
And could I ask staff to get with Mr. Kirchman to see specifically which property he was discussing? I couldn't tell from the description exactly where he was talking about. That would be helpful.
I, I think I may have a clarification on that. If we've, we've got the previous exchange bank, which is now vacant, so you'll have citizens and visitors traversing between the local establishments, and some of them might not be feeling so well, and it might behoove us to set up something where we might look at that, oh, on a Monday morning, and just to make sure that we're there, because they're absentee landlords, and we've got something that's a relatively minor cleanup, where it's right on public property and the commercial property. We, maybe we, we might look to do something like that in the interim until that particular space is vacated?
No, not exactly. As Damian said, we don't have any right to go on someone's private property and do anything, whether it's clean up a mess or, or park a car or whatever. If it's in the public right-of-way, and my understand, I, I did hear about this issue, and, and I know the complaint has been lodged with the Public Works Department. I didn't, I didn't know that there was anything with the property behind it, but that is why the process is so extrapolated, is because we have to first get, if we do it, we have to get permission to do it, and so, we don't often, Community Development doesn't have personnel to do that, so we first ask the property owner to do it.
I will, I will also add that Public Works does do rounds, they call it, once a week, and I can communicate with Public Works and ask them just to look at it as they go by once a week.
Terrific. Thank you.
With, on the, on the public sidewalk area.
Right. Thank you. Okay. I think I already discussed direction. We don't have any direction on future agenda items? Ms. Alderman, I was interested in allowing you to readdress the council, but I think we've got a clarification. We've got, we've got the Air Quality Management District permits that are pulled, and we're looking at them. We're done on that, Ms. Alderman. Thank you. Ms. Alderman, we're done.
So, move on to consent calendar?
We're moving on to... We've just had future agenda items, we don't have any changes, and we're going to go to consent calendar. I'm not, I'm not acknowledging that. Thank you.
We didn't have any suggested.
We did move the consent calendar, so...
No, it's a new item, called future agenda items. It's listed as an item on the agenda. I have a right to speak under it. Violation would be...
Do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I've moved to approve items two and three.
Do we have a second on the consent?
Mayor Moore, I would be more willing rather to listen to three more minutes than might be illuminating, rather than argue for another ten.
If the council feels so compelled, I would be willing to offer up three minutes.
To whom are we offering three minutes, is the clarification?
Mr. Barich has to speak on this agenda item. My perception was we'd already passed the consent, but if there's not, if there's not clarity in that, I think I'd rather let him speak than let him yell at us for in ten minutes.
Okay. And we didn't have any suggestions for the future agenda items, but sure.
Thank you, council. There is an item on the agenda called Direction on Future Agenda Items, and that's the item I wish to speak on tonight. I have some ideas for future agenda items. The bar owners in town have been complaining about the heavy-handed tactics of the Cattati Police Department for years, and you've done nothing about it, partly, I think, because you're scared. Well, I'm not scared. The failure of the city to settle my claim against the city last year in a civil rights case, my offer to settle for $1 and an apology was refused. I won that federal lawsuit. Now, the bar owners owe me a debt of gratitude. They were here a couple of weeks ago wanting to speak on this matter. I ask you to put it on the agenda. They owe me a debt of gratitude. Now, the bar owners and the bar patrons have the right to record police officers in the course of their work of policing the bars. I invited Cheryl Nixon and Kevin Greenger, owner of Spankies, to be here tonight to ask you to place on a future agenda how best I spend the proceeds from the $50,000 settlement for me letting the city off the hook. Kevin and Cheryl refused my invitation to be here tonight. You still have a chance to reach them. Let's place this item on a future agenda, even though I bet they won't show up, because they don't care about Cattati. And how about the idea of maybe having a breathalyzer test for the council members before each meeting? How about random drug testing for council members? Or would that hurt the profits for some of the businesses downtown? I think it should be on the agenda, future agenda. Future agenda items are important, and I think the council should respect citizens' input on future agenda items, and I would ask you to take caution, slow down a little bit, look around the room when people raise their hands, and abide by the law to allow the public to speak on each and every item on this, on our council agendas. Thank you very much, council.
Ms. Alderman, are you addressing future agenda items? Feel free. And I think, okay, thank you.
Please do not interrupt. One of the things that you've been, you suppressed me in saying from the audience, is that the pub, there is a public hearing that was noticed January 28th for the 22nd, it got changed from the 23rd, for, on the agenda for the council meeting. One of the things that was, the problems is that the Bay Area Quality Management District won, the city didn't give enough notice for the, the owners to meet that, to have the air quality and the J permit, the demolition, go through, and there was a letter, part of the letter is that if they weren't able to do it, it would go to March 9th or something, the next, the next meeting. This shouldn't have been information that had to be suppressed. I am tired of you guys not listening to me. This is wrong. We were not noticed. We should have been noticed. It's not, you broke every law in the world with this property. You enforce the property, you, you put all these enforcement things on the letter to the new owners who are the innocent victims of this. You guys need to do the right things. If you weren't trying to, to keep this quiet and under the table, you would have properly noticed us. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak regarding future agenda items? Seeing none, I will reclose public comment.
And I'll renew my motion to approve the consent calendar items two and three.
And I'd be happy to second that now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You may address item three, Mr. Barich.
When you first discussed this issue under its first reading, Councilwoman and Vice Mayor Harvey said that there has been a subcommittee that was set up four years ago. Mr. Landman said that the public was properly noticed through some agenda for a workshop, I guess, and anybody else in the room getting notices for workshops? The fact is, these committees, these subcommittees, are to be made up of city council members and interested members of the public at large, and I ask you, how many of you ask any member of the citizens, citizenry, citizenry, to be a member of this subcommittee? You have people in this, in this town with degrees in government, public administration, law, and you took this upon yourself not to ask the, the public to be part of this subcommittee? When week after week, month after month, citizens have come forward showing their desire to have the city do the right thing, come up with a public policy for a code of ethics and a code of conduct during city council meetings, and not a phone call, not an email, completely shutting out the public from this process? A four-year project that should have taken no more than four months. And in this new code, these council rules, I'm also suggesting that each and every citizen complaint that is filed with the city, that hits the city manager's office, is public record and is in the meeting packets at the end, at the back of the room. When I was on the council, I asked for that. I knew the complaints were coming into the city. City Manager Diane Thompson said, George, we are not sharing those with the public. I said, that's public information. I said, that's public information. They have a right to know. The council fought me on that. None of you were here for those meetings. Mr. Lammon probably home, you know, snug in your PJs, but you weren't here when we were fighting for what was right in Kattati. The housekeeping rules that you are enacting tonight through the second reading, these city council rules and conduct for the city council and the members of the public, was done, was roughshod over this community. It's a, it's a huge embarrassment. It's a disgrace that you would exclude the public with all the talent and the effort that we wanted to assist you with. It's shameful, simply shameful.
Thank you. Ms. Alderman, which item would you like to speak on? Thank you.
This is another one. I sent an email to you all. I approved at least six of your modifications to the Rosenberg rules were illegal, including the ADA one. And in there's, I'm not hearing anything about any corrections that you're making them illegal, that you're trying to pass these modifications that were illegal. I even went to the ADA Regional Center in Oakland, I'm not there, I called them, I called the Sonoma ADA. I gave you the information. Mr. Deliasso, he did thank me. I do know some of you read it, that I approved most of those, that you, you perverted the Rosenberg rules of order to be tame us citizens, which is completely wrong. You guys, for the last two years, have had two nay votes on agenda items, and the rest have been unanimous. That's how things work in this city, and they're always on the recommendation exactly to a T, whatever the staff says. That is wrong. Our citizens' input means something, and you need to have, pass rules that are reflective of what other cities do and not, we're not any different than any other city. You, you guys just like violating civil rights very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the consent calendar items number two and three? Seeing none, I will close citizens' business, and we'll go back to the consent calendar. So, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is any further discussion on those consent items?
No, thank you.
I personally think that the staff has done a tremendous job on that. I would certainly take the suggestion of our existing council and, and certainly cognizant and appreciative of the citizen input. I don't necessarily think that they have the expertise that a lawyer may have, that a lawyer may have. And so, with that in mind, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Appalled, seen opposed, absent Mr. Councilman Deliasso. So, that would be 4-0-0. Thank you. Now, we'll go to public hearings. We don't have any items on those tonight, so we'll go to the regular agenda. We're going to move our agenda item number five to the beginning. And then, we're going to hear from our Parks Recreation Director. Actually, it'll be from me tonight.
City Manager, Obid. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, this item is regarding our baseball fields at Kater and Putnam Park. And in December of 2015, Rancho Kattati Little League had terminated their field use license agreement, and they had been the licensed user of those fields for the prior, I believe, two years. And, excuse me, when Rancho Kattati Little League terminated their, their license agreement, we were approached by a couple of different groups that had interest in use of the fields. One was, I'll just use the short version, Cal Ripken Baseball. And then, the other was an individual who had previously been part of Rancho Kattati Little League, but now was no longer with that group and was working with Technology High, and was proposing, if we were to license it to him, to use it as a backup field for their baseball team, and then maybe for adult leagues to fill in in between that. And the license agreement is essentially identical in most ways to the, the prior agreement with Rancho Kattati Little League, in that they have a non-exclusive use of the fields. And so, in other words, like our rec department can work with them and share the use on the fields, but they would maintain the fields throughout the year. And this agreement before you tonight is an initial one-year term that, if requested by Cal Ripken and approved by the city, could be extended for an additional two, five-year terms. So, potentially up to 11 years. And with that, I will be happy to take any questions. Also, I will point out that in the audience tonight, we have Matt Krupp with Cal Ripken, who is also available to answer questions. Back there. Thank you.
Mr. Obid, thank you very much. I don't know if council had any questions or staff at the moment? Councilman Lammon?
I just wanted to ask one thing. I'm not aware of the backstory completely, but I'm finding the demise of Rancho Kattati Little League, and I'm just curious, are, what is there any potential for that coming back at any time in the near or near medium future, or any other more truly local organization, or does that seem like an unlikely option at this point, to the best of our knowledge?
At, at this current time, I'm not aware of Rancho Kattati Little League reformulating, but part of the rationale behind the one year is to, is to see if that's, you know, to see if there's anyone out there that's interested in doing that, and then we can reconsider it in a year if that was an option.
Good. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
And, God, sorry. I know that in the past, it's included the maintenance agreement, so is it true that this would also have them doing the maintenance on the field, and that would kind of save us some time and money?
That's correct. It does, it does have a benefit to the city as well as, in the sense that they maintain the, the baseball fields and the related facilities and keep it up to a, you know, a nice standard, and our maintenance crews aren't maintaining those areas while they are under license.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor Harvey?
So, if I understand this correctly, there, there were, there were two proposals being out there. And if I read this, one of them, the individual was going to let Petaluma Little League, but that's not the Cal Ripken proposal?
That is not.
Okay. So, with the Cal Ripken agreement, it would be just those folks that would be part of that league, and they would be using the fields?
It, it would just be the Cal Ripken League that would be using the fields. And we had an estimate in the staff report of, I believe it was 100, and they're estimating about 175 kids from Kattati would be in that league.
Right.
Among, you know, other kids that are in the program.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
And I'm going to open up the citizens' business. Matt Krupp, you wanted to speak on this? Please, come on up.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So, yeah, my name's Matt Krupp, and I am the president of Roanoke Park Cal Ripken. And just so you know, I've been a resident of Kattati for like 15 years. So, proud resident. And you mentioned, I think it's maybe like a local organization. Just, just so you know, I mean, like, five out of six kids that live in Kattati play in Roanoke Park Cal Ripken right now. So, like, over 80% of the kids play in that league. So, you know, our, our organization, Cal Ripken Baseball, like I said, we've been in, providing baseball and youth services to the kids for over 20 years. Right now, we have over 700 participants in our league. It's like, probably the biggest youth organization in the North Bay. We serve young boys and girls from ages four to 12. One of the exciting things that we do is like, we probably have 190 kids under six years old. So, we hope to have these kids with us for a long time. We currently have use agreements, we have seven use agreements with either the city of Roanoke Park or the Rancho Kattati School District. They're real similar in use agreements. I would encourage you, if you have any questions about how we maintain our fields, go to like A Park or B Park in Roanoke Park. They are absolutely outstanding, and they are in tremendous shape. We spend a ton of money to maintain our fields. We have an incredible volunteer organization. I have probably about 50 people willing to help upgrade Kater and Putnam. I mean, and I don't know if you guys see it, I, I look at these parks every day. I live right across the street from Putnam. It breaks my heart to see these not, fields not being in great shape. And we will use them, they will be, the use of Kattati and Roanoke Park are going to be using these fields extensively. They're going to get, these kids are going to be outside doing things. It's real exciting. So, like I said, I, the biggest thing, I think, if I was a city council person, wondering like how they maintain the fields. And, you know, we're on this one-year program, and I'm confident after you guys, you're going to say, these guys are great, and we want to renew them. So, like I said, we've done this for a long time. We've got really, really dedicated people that I'm really proud of. So, again, I just thank you. I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that you have for me or for my organization. But that's it. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Krupp, any further questions? Anyone else want to speak on this particular item on the regular calendar? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and bring it back to council.
I'd like to move that we authorize the city manager to execute a one-year, yes. Sorry?
I'm sorry. Wasn't waving quick enough.
Oh, go ahead.
And I agree. I'm sure I'll probably support this tonight, too. This, this sounds, the clarity of the presentation and the staff recommendation is clear to me. But I had one small concern I wanted to talk about. First of all, yeah, looking at the two proposals, this really benefits local children. It seems like a strong and healthy league. I see the potential for a good partnership, and that's all clear to me. The main concern, obviously, though, is local community. And sometimes, in some aspects, when we partnered with things branded Kattati, Roanoke Park, our city has not done as well, and that's historically, not current. But, so that's a concern. And it leads me to a question I have to ask in terms of community pride. Will we be having large banners saying Roanoke Park Cal Ripken at the games? That, that's something I could ask staff or with the mayor's agreement. I'd be happy to ask Mr. Krupp if I might, too.
So, if, if you go to our fields, it's just, we're a Cal Ripken organization, you know, similar to, to Little League or whatever. And, you know, there's, I don't think there's one thing that says Roanoke Park Cal Ripken in all.
So, not only that, it says Cal Ripken, plus the guy talking to us lives in Kattati?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you very much. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Mayor Harvey?
Yes, they, I'm glad to hear that we will be having another set of baseball leagues. I was saddened to hear that, that Rancho Kattati Little League was going away. But as they say, when one door closes, another one opens. So, I'm glad that you have your Cal Ripken organization. My son played in that for many years. It is a great organization, and I have had the pleasure of being on many of the different fields. So, I'm glad our fields will be included, and I look forward, if it goes that way, to a pleasant partnership. Thank you.
Councilmembers coming? And I don't really have anything further to add to that. I think under the circumstances, a one-year agreement would be fine. It would certainly allow for the fields to be brought up a little bit and maintained and allow kids an outlet to get out there and play. So, I'm okay within that regard, and we'll see what happens with RCLL down the road, if they can resurrect that or not. But in the meantime, I wouldn't want to prohibit any kids from being able to play ball on those fields. So, I believe you made a motion?
I started to with my bad voice, so I apologize. So, I would make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a one-year extendable license agreement between the city of Kattati and Roanoke Park Cal Ripken Babe Ruth Baseball for use of Kater Field and Putnam Park Baseball Field. I'd second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 4-0. And our next item is number four, consideration of the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency governance and possible extension of the existing, existing joint powers agreement. Mr. Obid, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before I start, I just also would want to point out that Patrick Carter with the waste agencies here also to help answer questions, if there are any, after the presentation. So, to make a long story short, the, the waste agencies, I think, everyone knows, but for the benefit of anyone that doesn't know, the agency's current primary responsibility include the authority and administration of the green waste composting program, household hazardous waste, solid waste education, solid waste planning and reporting on a regional basis. And this is done through a joint powers authority agreement, which is slated to expire in February of 2017. In the, in the staff report, there are three attachments, attachments A, B, and C. And I'll just point out right now that attachment A is responses from all the cities and the county on what was termed the matrix that we all looked at, maybe close to a year ago now. Includes us, plus all the other cities and county. And then, attachment B is, is an option that subsequently, subsequently came out after all the cities had looked at the matrix, but then the county, I believe, was the last to look at the matrix, and they came to the table with another GAPA option, another organizational option, which turned out to also have to be a GAPA. And that is, what they proposed was using the Regional Climate Protection Authority, the RCPA, and SCTA Board of Directors, that current organizational structure to, to run some of the, some of the programs such as reporting, planning, and education, the sort of the, the, this kind of programs that, that the RCPA at that, at that time, when they, and even now, had said that they'd be willing to take on. The other programs, such as household hazardous waste and, and composting, which I, I guess I'd call more operational kind of programs, the RCPA, SCTA was not interested in. So, after many discussions, kind of where this has all landed is that, one of the things, so that's been swirling around out there, and kind of where it's landed is that the RCPA, if they took it over, like I said, they'd be doing, they'd have to, first of all, form a GAPA to be able to do regional reporting and, and planning on our behalf. They're not currently a joint powers authority, so they have to form one. And then, we'd have to find someone to do household hazardous waste and green waste composting, either the county or Republic Services, who operates the landfill right now, or someone else. But that wasn't really defined. And in the packet, there's attachment B, there's a, there's a matrix that shows the, what it would look like if the waste agency did it, and what it would look like if the Regional Climate Protection Authority did it. And one of the things that's pointed out in the staff report is that if the RCPA were to take over the, the non-operational functions, they've, at least in my opinion, there's a couple disadvantages to that. I mean, one is you have to form a GAPA anyway, which really doesn't buy you much from the current GAPA, because it's either GAPA or it's a JPA. And then, the other thing is if you get, if you come in with the SCTA, RCPA, you sort, you're sort of buying into the organizational structure, and there's no, there's, they've expressed no desire to change that in terms of the membership structure, in terms of the voting structure. So, obviously, if you form your own GAPA, there's the potential, either amend the current GAPA or form a new GAPA, there's always the potential to make it how the members see fit. The, as I mentioned earlier in the staff report, and I thought I was going to say this is short, but it's turning into a longer staff report. Anyway, they, they said that, as I'd said earlier, that it's going to expire in February 2017. They, the agency has expressed the need to have a decision on, on what the future body will be that'll take over these functions by the end of this fiscal year. So, we're talking July 1st, June 30th of 2016. And the reason- And the reasons that the agency have cited for being able to make a decision by that point from all the member agencies is that they have a variety of contracts that they currently run, that they would have to know if they're going to be amending them, to extend them, or winding the organization down, or what exactly it is that they have to do and they need time to do that. Some other reasons that are cited by the agency are, there's a couple things going on, mostly related to the compost site at the landfill. There's, the citing study is, is done, but they're working on some kind of preliminary engineering work to determine what that would look like. Some of the members have expressed some desire to see what that would look like and I think perhaps our agency rep might have more details on that. But they're working on those details and they're also, they're also working on what the cost structure, if it stated the county landfill, I think, is another outstanding thing. And then there also, there's also some existing litigation. So all those things are sort of in progress. And if, if the JPA were extended, the assumption is that there would potentially be more time to see how those things unfold and maybe more information later down the line. So, the fundamental question that the waste agency needs to know is whether the city council prefers a standalone agency, current to the similar model, or, or a new waste management JPA affiliated with SCTA, RCPA. And as of the date that the staff report was written, I'll just let you all know that three cities had considered the new matrix, which is attachment C in this, in this staff report. And those cities were Petaluma, Sonoma, and Roanoke Park. And so what, what's happened in those three cities is Petaluma, Sonoma basically said they didn't have enough information and so they punted that and then opted to allow the city manager to extend the JPA by one year. Roanoke Park felt that an agency, with their term in agency light model would be the preferred way forward. In other words, a model that would take over the, the functions that needed to be a JPA. So we're talking about, you know, the regional reporting and planning and education, those, those things, but not pick up household hazardous waste and green waste composting and relegate that to whoever takes it, presumably Republic and/or the county. And they opted to not extend the JPA by one year. And the relevance of that, of course, is that the current voting structure and the existing JPA is that it requires unanimous, an unanimous vote of all the members to amend the JPA. And if Roanoke Park doesn't opt out of the JPA before that, or doesn't change their stance on that extension, they basically, the JPA wouldn't be able to be extended because of a member. And the other cities are also looking at it, but I haven't heard anything about their positions. I think they're coming up on their councils in the near future. And so just to wrap it up, I would just, will point out a couple things. Some of the other cities that have seen this cited, you know, lack of information about the, about the structure. I don't know that, I honestly don't know that another year is going to really clarify things with regard to the JPA structure. It either is one or the other, and I don't know that there's going to be much more information about that. But I don't, I do think it's, you know, as much as I, as much as I would recommend that, that the JPA and the future of the agency be resolved as soon as possible, I think, and I think that's where Roanoke Park was coming from with their reluctance or their vote to not extend the JPA. I think it's a prudent option to have it on the table in case you need it. And down below at the financial considerations, I just wanted to point out that if the agency, if nothing were to happen and the agency were just to dissolve, then what happens is each of the member agencies would have to report individually. And in order to do that, they would have to work with Cal Recycle to develop a waste diversion baseline study for each one of the individual cities. And that's, those are the costs that are cited below, the $20,000 to $170,000, I think that would be based on the size of the city probably. So I'd imagine we'd be closer to the lower end of that. But we would have to go through that exercise to report individually. And then we would also have to, the ongoing maintenance costs to continue that. And then, of course, we'd have to also pick up education and everything else that goes along with it. So, if we were to do it individually. So with that, what was supposed to be short but turned into a very long staff report, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And also, Patrick is here to help answer questions as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Councilman Lemon?
Probably have a whole heck of a lot of comments. I will reserve those to later, to the commenting period. But I do have one general question. So essentially, due to the perhaps not foresighted structure of the JPA requiring unanimous vote for items of importance, who would have thought that could create a problem down the road? We're in a position essentially where one community, even if they're in a minority, are standing alone, have the ability potentially to make this whole thing collapse for the entire county. Would that be a fair assumption? It also states, though, that they have the option, of course, to opt out of the agency if they're unhappy with the direction that the majority wants to go. Is there any mechanism in between that helps make that happen? Or is that completely up to the will of the participant?
I believe it's up to the, to the member agency to decide that, but...
So would we have done completely on the goodwill of one community, then, if they were a minority, not to destroy this for, well, that's a harsh term, but essentially it's true, essentially finalize and cost all our public a lot more by doing that, correct?
It's my understanding that if any of the member agencies decide not to extend the term, it's up to those member agencies to either opt out or change their stance on that. Otherwise, it would just dissolve, it'd just expire.
That would be a better outcome, I would think. Thank you for helping clarify that.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
I have no questions. I do have some things I'd like to highlight after we have public comment.
Okay. Council members coming? Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment period on this and I believe we had...
Would you like to speak now or...
Yes, you can come on up for a public comment. And I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Patrick Carter.
Patrick, thank you.
I'm the interim executive director of the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency. Want to thank your city manager for doing an excellent presentation and boiling down the issues. I was prepared to give the same speech he just gave, so he really stole my thunder. But I guess the, if, if you're having a deja vu moment where somebody that is very similar to my appearance gave a presentation asking very similar questions to what we're asking tonight, that's not deja vu. We actually did this last year. The questions are basically the same, but we didn't get consensus when we went through all the different 10 jurisdictions throughout Sonoma County. This is just an attempt because there's new information out there with this idea of including the Regional Climate Protection Authority as one of the options as a successor agency. That's the main reason that we're out here. The county kind of came up with that idea going last and so nobody else had a chance to consider that. So that, that's really the, the biggest piece of new information at this, at this point. There was an option before where the county could, they thought people, people thought that maybe the county could take over all the agency's operations, but because of the requirement of a JPA to do the planning and reporting that the agency currently does, the county is no longer an option. So they kind of threw out this idea of the Regional Climate Protection Authority being a regional body that has membership of, of all 10 Sonoma County jurisdictions, being a potential viable option. If you look through that, that table that we've, that's been included in your staff report, there's not a whole lot of differences between the JPA that, that we currently have with the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency and the JPA that would likely be formed under the control of the Regional Climate Protection Authority. But except for the voting requirements, the unanimous vote, but that's, you know, I'll point out, is that's, could be potentially altered by a, a vote of all the agency members currently. The, the membership of that, the Regional Climate Protection Authority has 12 members, three of which are county members and nine of which are city representatives, one from each city. That's caused some concern among some members that, that we've spoken to. Just, I'm not saying that's good, better, and different, I'm just bringing up the points there, the differences there. And as your city manager mentioned, the Regional Climate Protection Authority staff indicated not being interested in, in performing the operational aspects of the wood waste and yard waste composting programs and the household hazardous waste collection programs. Those are the main differences. Would really appreciate your feedback on hearing whether you're interested in extension for one year and if there's, I mean, at this point, I'd really just like to narrow options. If, if one of these options is not interesting to this council, I'd like to take it off the table when we go through and see what the consensus is and just start narrowing the options and trying to help decisions get made. So, thank you for your, your thoughts tonight and allowing me to speak on this issue.
Patrick, I do have a couple questions for you, if I may. I don't know if the council has any existing questions for Patrick. Was there an indication why they didn't want to consider the green waste or the household hazardous waste?
I think that was getting into new territory. They, they had, you know, contractual relations with, you know, they did a lot of construction with, you know, freeways and giving out money for, for that. But actually running an operation, I think, is something that they hadn't done before and they would, was, they considered it more, a, a big enough departure from their core mission that they didn't want to take that on. Given also kind of some trepidation into, into an area where there's some active litigation, I think was a concern with them as well.
So it was the staff that didn't necessarily want to take that on versus the board?
That's correct. I mean, that, that was from the staff. We've, we've talked, I've gone before, as council member Lemon will remember, I've gone before the RCPA board to talk about this issue. The board has had some discussions on it. I, I don't think that there's necessarily policy decisions made on that, but ultimately the, you know, your councils, all the, all 10 members of, of the RCPA direct those staff, you know? You, you're the policymakers. You know, you could tell them to do that or not, but you know, it's, there's inertia, I guess, to overcome with, with staff that doesn't really want to get into that area and has concerns from a legal standpoint.
Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions. Well, I will bring up, Mr. Birch, pardon me.
Thank you, sir. Just a moment, just for the, to keep harmony among the city council and to help the meeting go smoothly and you get through these difficult items, I would just recommend that if somebody makes a motion, don't interrupt them. Let he or she make their motion, have a little courtesy. You always can ask for clarification on a motion, you can amend a motion. When the mayor goes and says, you know, gets a second, you have an opportunity to qualify and comment again. I just think it's good common courtesy and good practice. Let people finish their motions and it's, it's appropriate in Roberts' Rules of Order, it's also appropriate in Rosenberg's Rules of Order. And we're in no hurry. Let's just do, just try to do things the right way and let's not step on each other when you're speaking. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those guidelines on common courtesy. Anyone else want to speak on this particular item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Bring it back to council.
Okay, I guess I'll make a few comments. So, I think for me, part of the issue that I am having with all of this is we've kind of lost our way. We seem to have lost our focus. So we keep coming up with these, you know, what about this, what about that, what about this? We've lost our focus and the focus was on a regional approach for diversion of our waste. That focus is lost. It's like, put it here, put it there. You know, I hear comments like, well, whoever takes it for the composting and HHW. Well, it doesn't just fall on the floor and somebody picks it up. It takes work to do that. So if you break this thing apart and you do the reporting and the, the education and the planning and all that, and then someone takes this piece and someone, each one of those things takes an agreement, a legal agreement to make that happen. It, it doesn't just happen magically. I think originally when the matrix came forward and some of the folks filled it out and they go, oh, well, just let the county take it. They didn't like raise their hand and say, oh, yeah, yeah, yippee, we want it and we'll, you know, no paperwork, no nothing, we'll just take it. It didn't happen that way. And, you know, I think folks maybe thought that. So I just really am frustrated that we've really lost the focus. You know, key in here, it says, it says likely require additional agreements between the cities and someone, be it the cities and the county, be it the cities and Republic. That's important. And the reason that's important is it affects our ratepayers. So anytime somebody else gets involved like that, as we know went on with the landfill, you know, the landfill, the county added their convenience fee. Well, does that mean then for composting and HHW, we're going to have a convenience fee added on for that? We don't know. That's part of the problem. That's why I have an issue with kind of throwing the baby out and say, let's not do it this way and someone will take it if we don't really know the costs of that. I want to know, is it going to cost us more? Isn't it going to cost us more? You know, if, if they take it and it doesn't cost us more and it's the best deal for our ratepayers, all right, but we don't know that yet. So, let's see, what else? It says in here, it's expected for the composting and HHW for them to stay the same. I don't know that we know that. We don't know that yet. We haven't gotten any costs on that. So, I'm, I'm a little clear on that. And, and both, Republic has the right as a business to make a profit. I mean, I don't, you know, begrudge them that. If, if they take it, you know, they can set the rate structure and so be it. But I want us to be going into this with our eyes wide open, you know, you know, on that. I went back and I, and I listened, I was curious, I keep, I'm hearing this agency light, you know, I keep hearing this agency light. And I went back and I listened to what Roanoke Park said. And I found that to be a little concerning to me because what they talked about was really just the reporting. They said, oh, well, we'll just have agency light do the reporting, we'll cover that piece. Oh, and by the way, we want just the public works directors to be the group that does that. And, well, what about the education? What about the outreach? What about our diversion goals? I, I'm just, we're, we're not going to focus on any, any of that. And then it goes on to say, oh, well, go ahead and, and start this new one and we'll decide if we want to add in the composting and HHW and we can defer that. Well, guess what? We can't defer it past February 2017 or it falls back to the cities. The contract ends and, and something has to be done. So deferring is a relative term, but really without an extension, then, you know, it, it comes back. And I don't think the cities are prepared for that. And I don't know if we can get contracts in place even by then to deal with it if we don't. So anyways, that's sort of my two cents on this. I'm a little frustrated at this point. We keep going around in a circle. I heard things about unanimous voting. Yes, that unanimous voting can be problematic. I've been on the agency now for, I don't know, three years, four years. I can recall one vote that there was a problem. It was the county and they had a, a reason for their no vote. We ended up, you know, working through it. We had one instance last month where a person, the meeting fell off their calendar, so they weren't there, so. But it doesn't happen. And I, and I heard in Roanoke Park, they said, oh, well, it's, it's a problem and, you know, they can't ever do anything because of unanimous vote. I haven't seen that happen. It hasn't happened. We work through what needs to happen and yeah, would I prefer to have a majority or something like that? Yeah, but unanimous vote hasn't caused a problem that I've seen. Maybe in the early formations it did, but I haven't seen it. But anyways, I'll shut up for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Lemon?
Well, I have to say, it's clear that sometimes we look at, some things are best handled by the private sector. A profit motive is a powerful motivator and sometimes that brings the best benefit to a community, the public, and everyone. Other times, it's clear that some things just don't work out. It's a money-making... Other times, it's clear that some things just don't work out as a money-making enterprise and that the public loses out. And I think this is a perfect example of this. I don't know if I would describe what's being proposed as agency light. I would say it's more like a forced privatization of a very, very successful program that's benefited this community. The most important part, in my mind at least, the household hazard waste and the composting have been well-regarded, very successful, and I have just been very disappointed to watch this be torn down and essentially torn apart over time. And I'll speak freely on this because this is how I personally at least perceive what's going on. Particularly when the direction that seemed to be pushed carves these important things out and gives them to a private entity, as Councilmember Harvey has very clearly pointed out, is going to make a profit from this. A large profit, quite likely to take on this unusual problem, reinvent it from scratch, and that will cost the community a lot more. But that's not being talked about. We'll likely wind up with green waste being trucked out of the county. You know, I look at where we were at a few years ago with what the Waste Management Agency was doing and the direction now some are pushing us and it's like we're turning the clock back. It's not 1987 anymore. This is the 21st century and this is not the direction we should be going in. I think allowing a minority to kill perhaps the best benefits of the JPA is not a best direction and I think it should be clear, I feel somewhat strongly the other way. I will say that RCPA, I have to serve in that Board, it's true. That's one thing I agree with wholeheartedly. They are a great staff, from top to bottom. There's nothing I have no worries about them handling. But if RCPA is not upset up and not willing, and more than that, if there's pressure for them not to handle the most important benefits for this community, the household hazardous wastes and the compost, then my personal opinion, as someone who sits on the Board and supports them strongly, we shouldn't be doing it. Because there's one key thing that's been mentioned and I'll mention it again because it bears repeating. Perhaps the unanimous vote is a problem. I think we can see there's some problems. You can run into that structure. But I can live with that a lot easier than the way the voting structure is historically been set up in SETA RCPA. This is a legacy of times past. And to make a long story short, roughly a quarter of the votes are controlled by one interest, which is the county. And for the most time, as is in the Waste Management Board, usually this works fine. But as we've learned, there's nothing more problematic than waste management and waste disposal in this county and there's nothing that costs the public more than that sometimes if we aren't at the table paying attention. And if we don't have that ability to have an equal voice and equal say, I fear the direction could be very poor for us. That is a legacy that we shouldn't support and it's one that shouldn't be repeated. And I think that while there may be an unwillingness to change that, I would personally love to see this not be recommended to go to the RCPA because I think that will become the question. In my senses, there are strong numbers of cities that would want to discuss that as a change for both STA and RCPA. And seeing as this is history, I have no personal interest in upsetting the apple cart, but if it's pushed towards me through this action, I don't see a choice with it. So, I would look forward to going through these things very quickly, one by one. I think we kind of know where we're at in a lot of them and we can give Mr. Carter the direction he needs, hopefully.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Skuman.
No, I actually don't have anything to add at this point. I think you guys have covered a lot of the main points and just looking at how we had answered the questions to the matrix previously, I think that's offered some guidance, but it's a good idea to go through and I'm going to stop talking now.
Thank you. So, it sounds as if I'm hearing that the existing thoughts are to extend the existing JPA for now until some point in the future that there's more definitive direction and better structure set up. That's how I interpreted it. That was my feelings after reading the material and listening to the things that have been going on with the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency over the last several years. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would point out on packet page 64, actually, there's a lot of stuff to try and get down. It's difficult, but there are actually very handily, thank you, staff, there are eight requested feedback questions. And I think if we each can just go through and get a quick consensus of where we're at in the council and those items, one through eight, hopefully we'll get the direction we need and it would be the easiest way perhaps to wade through this process and save Mr. Carter an even longer evening. I know, just for example, to access the floor, I look at the first one, do we wish to participate in a regional composting program? Yes, I do. My personal feeling is I would like to see the authority remain with the Sonoma County Waste Management Authority. And I think we could just, I'll go down very quickly through all, if you want, I'll go through my thoughts and these very quickly, maybe we can all do that individually?
I, you know, I think for efficiency, that might work. And then if we do have a counter to that, we can bring that up on that particular item, if that works for the rest of the council.
I'm just going to blow through these really quickly then.
Thank you.
For item, let's see. Does your jurisdiction wish to participate in regional household hazardous waste collection? Yes, I think that would be beneficial. Again, I would like to see the Waste Management Agency continue to do that. From my perspective, on number three, do we wish to participate in a regional solid waste education and outreach? Yes. Again, I'd like to see the authority stay with the Waste Management Agency. Similarly, the same thing for number four. I'd like to see us participate in regional solid waste planning and reporting. The two go together. It's almost pointless to separate them. And again, I think we've had success in the past. I would prefer to stay with the Waste Management Agency for a number of reasons. I believe the new JPA should have the authority to create county-wide ordinances. I look at the bag and we have, it's been successful. And after some consternation, getting used to something new, it's actually been well-adopted and successful and it's worked well. I think that's a good thing and that's one reason I'm very supportive of the Waste Management Agency. Should the opting, what should the opting out process allow? And I believe, and I could be argued on this, I could go either way, but my first take is I think that you should be able to opt out if you want, but only if remaining members are made financially whole. That seems to be the industry standard to protect the community and all the participants can work together, but it still gives flexibility to everybody. So, if they want to go a different direction, they have the ability. I think that's important. I believe in number seven, should Board membership be limited to elected officials? Very strongly, I feel yes. I think the source of the problem that we have right now is instead of having a clear elected Board representing the public with good input from a dedicated and talented staff, we have something that's kind of in between. And my experience, both from watching this and also in serving these other boards, regardless of the talent that many of these people have, that's not a best practice. I don't know if that will happen, but that at least is my personal take. And lastly, if it's not clear, I think the number of Board representatives that each jurisdiction should have is one. That's probably not a shock to you. Thank you.
Could we have any counters to those suggestions on that particular issue?
I can live on seven with either. I know that some cities feel really strongly that they want to be able to choose their membership and that's the way it is now. And yes, we have a mix. And I agree with you, a lot of the Boards do have elected officials on them. We talked a little bit about having a technical group and then an elected group. People didn't seem to be really interested in that. So, that's one that's not really as much of a showstopper for me. It's worked okay and maybe because it's the technical aspects of some of it.
I have to say, I was shocked by that because even at the RWA, which is much smaller and has much less resources, I would imagine at least, than the Waste Management Authority, we have a Board of Directors and we have a TAC, which, and it's the same sort of thing. We all have a common interest. We're trying to pool resource to save the public money to work together on things we have to deal with. And the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, is made up from staff members from every community. So, everybody still gets their viewpoint, both at the technical level and this, but it's not a deal breaker for me. If this is where you wanted to go, I wouldn't vote against it, but I will say strongly that's where my vote is.
I would agree with you. It's not a deal breaker for me and that's where I'm at. I could live, you know, but I, we have gone from, I think there was just one, it was Steve Barbosa, he was on there, Patrick could correct me, I want to say for like 20 years or something, but close to that. And then slowly, you know, kind of the impetus for getting more elected officials on there is when we did the solid waste advisory group, we kind of found out about this because I think that a lot of us really didn't know because it tended to be staff. And then as the solid waste advisory group started getting more and more into these issues, it became apparent that there was a lot of overlap between the two. And then one by one by one, more of the cities had elected officials. And that's, kind of goes back and forth and we've had some cities with them and then cases where an elected official has left and they've replaced it with staff. But for a while there, we had, I want to say we were up to like seven or, yeah, at least seven of the 10, which was, which was great. So, anyways, that's my two cents.
Councilmembers come in.
No, I agree with what you were saying and actually this matches up with how we'd respond to the matrix questions as well. So, the idea of the membership being limited to elected officials, that's, I agree, that wouldn't be a deal breaker, but it's good to give direction as far as what we would prefer. So, I would concur with one through eight. Do we need, well, I'll finish, we'll let you finish on one through eight first.
I think if we're all in agreement on that, I would have Tennessee lean toward more of the elected officials on that one. It would not be a deal breaker, but that would be my preference. So, with that in mind, shall we call for a motion supporting that direction?
Oh, but what did we decide about the one-year extension? Because it's twofold here.
My understanding is that we had a consensus that we should go with the one-year extension, if that's correct?
Okay. And I would like to make a motion directing the city manager to respond to the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, the preferred authority and administration of programs, and to extend the Waste Management Agency for one year.
Through the, yeah, through the approval of the attached resolution.
Through the approval of the attached resolution and with the answers to our questions.
And I'd be happy to second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
No absence, one absence, no extensions. Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick.
And now we move on to item number six. Recommendation of Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association for Appointment to North Bay League of California Cities, North Bay Division Executive Board. Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is a recommendation to the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association for Appointment to the North Bay League of California Cities, otherwise known as LOCC or the League. They're the North Bay Division Executive Board. And so, the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers Association is made up of the Sonoma County Mayors and Councilmembers and a number, and that association appoints members to various regional committees for representation. And there is a vacancy on the LOCC North Bay Executive Board. Two letters have been received expressing interest in this position and they are from Chris Albertson of Petaluma, Councilmember Chris Albertson, Petaluma, Councilmember Mark Milan of Windsor. So, the Mayors and Councilmembers Association will be meeting this Thursday and one of their agenda items is to make this appointment. I believe it's the Board of Directors of the Mayors and Councilmembers Association will be making the appointment. So, you'll just be discussing which of these folks you would like to support for that appointment.
Thank you. I'll open it up to council, if you have any questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Is this an item that should be opened up to public comments? Anybody interested in speaking on this particular item? Seeing none, I will close public comments and bring it back to the council. Councilmembers come in. Any thoughts on this?
I actually haven't, a lot of times people reach out to you individually and I haven't had any contact with either Councilmember Albertson or Councilmember Milan. It looks like they're both very qualified. I was impressed by their length of experience working with the League on similar issues. So, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other just because I haven't spoken to either party.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harvey.
I would like to hear what Councilmember Landman has to say, only because he works on the Russian River Waterside Association with Mark Milan. I haven't had a whole lot of interaction, nor did I have any outreach from anyone, so...
I was going to ask you because you're on the League Board, but I'd be happy to take that potato and take a stab at it if you'd like.
I just would like to, you've worked with him?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, just like to hear a little bit more.
Okay, well, Mayor Milan, very nice person. Both of these gentlemen are friends and I will also, neither of them have contacted me in this, a little unusual form of things, usually people do give you a call. Mr. Mayor Milan's a very pleasure to deal with, very capable, intelligent, has an incredibly strong background in water, as he mentioned this here. It is indeed very deep. Normally, for anything related to that, first, somebody has to do this, so I would support him strongly. But I do look at this and I see my other friend, Councilmember Albertson, has served as the alternate member to the Executive Board and has a long experience, although certainly not as impressive perhaps in water and things as Mayor Milan, a long experience with the League of Cities. With that, if I have two people going to the same position, there's no key thing that pushes one to the other, but one is the alternate, it does strike me usually the alternate should step up to that role. I mean, that's the only thing that moves me either way.
And I'd like to speak to that and that's kind of where I was at. The only other tidbit of information is that Petaluma already has a representative on the Board. Mike Healy is the, I'll get it, the Vice President, so he's in line for that. So, that's the only other piece of information is, you know, it would be nice to get representation. But I agree with you, you know...
Mayor Milan does represent the other end of the county. There would be some value in that.
So, I was really very torn too, but that was kind of another piece of information that I didn't know if that would help or not.
Well, that doesn't help.
I'm sorry.
Having met Mr. Milan and having met Mr. Albertson, I would be more inclined to go with the northern representation in the county myself. But other than that, it would be relative, I would think it would be like tossing a coin on that particular situation. So, I would be more inclined to go with Mr. Milan, but if somebody wants to make a motion...
I would be happy to support either gentleman and I think both would do an excellent job. I would say whoever, whichever way this motion goes, whoever isn't selected, if one of those two gentlemen come to front of us again for a League position or any position related to something, they have a background, we keep that in our mind and do our best to give them some support because I think that would be a good thing. So, with that, I'd like to move, we support Mayor Milan for the position.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There'll be four ayes, one absence. Thank you. Of course, Mr. Delosso probably has a different idea, but that's okay. And we'll move on to the consideration of resolution approving a freeway maintenance agreement with Caltrans, number seven on the regular agenda. Thank you.
Mayor members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. This item is, addresses consideration of approval of the freeway maintenance agreement between the city and Caltrans. Now, the history of this agreement goes way back to 1957 when, to delineate the respective responsibilities between the county and Caltrans over the interface between the freeway and the county areas. And over time, as the city incorporated, it sort of overlapped those areas. And so, this agreement now reflects the increased responsibilities the city has assumed in the annexation as it's grown. And so, the, for the, in the agreement, the agreement has, you know, very specific provisions in there of, you know, delineating the responsibilities. And then the, pictorially, the exhibits have, you know, the areas delineated with hash marks and I'll go into that a little bit more in the presentation. And then Exhibit B talks about the signalized intersection, the sharing of the costs of the signals, the maintenance of the signals as well as the electrical costs. So, basically... So basically, you know, you've got the structure of the freeway, and that's all Caltrans. This is, again, this is the interface. And what prompted this was, the agreement, was that the freeway expansion project, I believe in 2002 or so, so a while ago, so we're just now catching up to that. But with that project, there was a replacement of the Highway 116 interchange, and then the interchange at Sierra Avenue. And so in, Caltrans, you know, prompted by that, or any sort of annexation or infrastructure change then necessitates this agreement be revised. And so we're looking at Sierra Avenue. You have the roadway, the Cal, you know, the city's responsibility is in maintaining the roadway, the curb and gutter, the sidewalk, and removing graffiti in that under crossing. You look at the whole structure and so forth, that's Caltrans, okay, to maintain that. Moving over, there's the pedestrian pathway at School Street, and so anything in that pathway is the city's responsibility. There's lighting in there, there's, you know, if there's graffiti or anything, we'd be on the hook to remove that, to keep that well-maintained. And then you have the 116 interchange, and that's, broadens what the city is responsible for, because there's the, there's landscaping in there, the street trees, there's a median landscaping, the irrigation to provide for those trees. And with the project, there is the retaining walls with the music note motif, as well as the sound walls. And so those, very specifically in the agreement, are for the city to maintain the city side of those features. So let's just take the retaining walls. So the city maintains that piece, and then anything in front of it, so there are debris, or weeds, or whatnot, the city's, you know, responsible for that. And then the sound walls, specifically for the musical notes. And you look at those, they're in stone, you know, on the wall, and, and so I'm, maintaining those involves what? You know, I mean, I guess if there, if there was graffiti or something, and it would be at our choice, like what we would deem to be needed, to keep those presentable and, you know, in good repair, in good presentation. Okay, then moving over to the, the traffic signal piece of it, you have the traffic signal operation, which Caltrans would be, is responsible for the efficient, practical operation of, to ensure good traffic flow. And the city is, is responsible for sharing the costs that are, that Caltrans maintain, or they have got the contracts for maintaining those, for managing, administering the electric bills and so forth, but there's just a sharing, so, component that the city has. So they would forward that piece of it to us. And we currently do all this, so the financial impact to the city is really minor, if anything, because we already maintain these areas. This just formalizes it. So that, that basically concludes my presentation. We're just looking, the staff, staff recommends the city adopt resolution approving the freeway maintenance agreement with Caltrans, and at this time, I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Craig. I didn't have any questions myself. Councilmember Schimmel? Councilmember, Vice Mayor Harvey?
So on Exhibit, you talk about the sharing of the lighting and all that, yet if I look at Exhibit B, it says that the city is 100% and the state is zero, so what part of sharing am I missing?
Exhibit B speaks directly to the emergency preemptive equipment, and so when a firetruck comes in, they can push it by, and it goes green for them.
So it's just that equipment, not the, the whole light itself and the cost for the light, just that equipment?
That, that the city has 100% share of, correct, or responsibility for. What the signalized, our share of the signalized equipment is addressed more in the agreement words, the language of the agreement.
Thank you.
Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mayor Moore, one quick question. In this sort of, you know, I, I look at this, this is logical, I could see, looking since this started in 1957, is a good time to resolve, doesn't get this cleaned up. The financial impact appears to be minor, the greatest exposure is potential one-time cost, so that's not terribly worrisome. The only thing I wanted to ask, in this, the one thing that really isn't in here would be helpful for me, is in this sort of situation, would you describe this as a typical disbursement or, or sharing of responsibilities? Is anything that strikes you as different than, different than best practices would expect? I'm not seeing it jump out at me, but this isn't something I've seen a lot of before, so I just wanted to ask if there's anything the staff feels is out of the ordinary, or is, is it appears to be essentially pretty boilerplate?
Pretty boilerplate? You know, I specifically drilled down into the Caltrans right-of-way areas, which can sometimes become problematic, but the language here is on the city side of the fences and of the retaining walls. And so certainly, that makes sense that the city...
I would agree. It seemed logical. The only other note I'd like to see is, just one quick piece of input, yes, I would like to see those notes kept presentable. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Got it, thanks.
I will add real quick, that the one thing that's, that is a little bit unique about this, is just the landscaping on 116. But the agreement gives us the ability, it gives us the legal ability to go in there and actually maintain the landscape, whereas if we just put a tree in the tree well, without an agreement, obviously that would be problematic on several levels, but one of which would be, that we wouldn't be able to actually get in there and really maintain the thing. So it establishes our right to do it, and, and essentially, freeway expansion, they agreed to do it, they put the infrastructure in, and now this formalizes our right to go in and maintain it.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
So Damian, does this mean that after all this is done, we may see some trees in those? Harry?
Yes, we, we have a design. The bid package is almost ready for the landscape, the trees going in, the median, the irrigation, and we're getting money from SCTA for that, and we're on the verge of putting that out to bid. Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions, concerns, discussion, comments, likes, dislikes? Call for the motion? Oh, pardon me. Mr. Birch?
Look, no offense to the city engineer, you know, thank you for a job well done, but if history is any guide here, the last 10 or 20 years of the maintenance of these areas has been atrocious. Between the county, Caltrans, the city of Cattati, and the fire department, they've been shifting blame. There has been, these areas have often been unkept, there's been high weeds, there's been garbage that nobody has been able to pick up, the merchants have been out in the streets doing a lot of the maintenance themselves. And I'm hoping that this agreement will, will further some cooperation and some clarity with Caltrans and the county, where our obligations leave off and theirs start. And the, and the very thought of your, of these agencies battling each other to maintain these areas is really kind of ridiculous. The fact is, is we have had fire hazards in this town for years that neither the city will address, and the fire department wouldn't address. I would come to these meetings and complain of the high weeds next to the freeway, and the city council would say that it's the fire district's responsibility. I'd go to the fire district meetings and say, "Look at, no, it's the city's responsibility." This back and forth, and, and having the, the public's health and safety in danger because you people couldn't get your act together to know whose responsibility it is, and then claim that you didn't have the resources to take care of it, has been atrocious. This is a step in the right direction, but we're going to need some leadership. Because even next to my house, at the West Cattati Oaks Homeowners Association, we have a sound wall. Between the sound wall and our private park is approximately 30 feet distance that has been unkept for years, and complaints go unheard and unresolved by the city. It's a tinderbox, and that's not the only area in town which are prone to major fires and, and garbage accumulating that nobody is picking up and so forth. We are doing our best, in our homeowners association, to keep our obligation and our private park maintained. The city needs to set up, step up their game, and Caltrans needs to step up their game. Because you have failed. You know you've failed. I've talked to the city managers in the past, they drive by it every morning on their way to work. But there's other things that are more important in Cattati, oftentimes. So good luck with this. The staff has the citizen's support on this. Get it done, and get it done right.
Thank you. Ms. Alderman?
I just wanted to also support what George is telling about on Maple Avenue to the Burger King, that there is high weeds, there, it's very dangerous to walk at, at certain times because it's, the weeds are so high from, to the highway. It's not a great place to be, and I just wish that somebody would deal with it.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to address this issue? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Bring it back to the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend that the city council move, I would like to move a resolution approving the freeway maintenance agreement with Caltrans.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, one absence. Now we will go to correspondence and pending legislation. No items there. And now we'll go to the city manager's report. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple items tonight. One is on, there's a, there's just an informational item, that there's a mosaic designed for the walls on the corners of Overwood Highway 116, these are the walls that will be installed shortly. And that's scheduled to come before the Design Review Committee on February 18th. And the mosaic adds, as it's currently proposed, incorporate scenes of the natural environment and Indian motifs with a nod to musical heritage of Cattati. So it's impressive I can get and wind all that, those three things together, but I think it looks nice, from what I've seen. And also, on the water conservation front, I think last time we reported that the governor had basically said that come the end of January, if, if the state reservoirs weren't, weren't full, that the emergency regulations were going to automatically extend. And so on February 2nd, the State Water Board extended the emergency water conservation regulation through October of 2016. The reservoirs statewide are, with the exception of Folsom Lake, are less than their historical average in terms of level of water storage. That isn't true locally, so Lake Sonoma and Lake Mendocino are doing good right now. Lake Mendocino, of course, relies on spring rain to really fill for the summer, so that has yet to be, we have yet to see how that, how Lake Mendocino is going to fill out, but Lake Sonoma is, the water supply pool there is close to its capacity, so locally, we're doing all right. But since we are in California, we're all in this together, so with the extension of the emergency water conservation regulations, it'll, it'll continue to require us to maintain our, our water conservation requirements that the council instituted last year when this happened initially, which was the two days per week of outdoor ornamental turf irrigation, except for public playing fields, which were limited to three days per week. And the governor, or the State Water Board, may revise the regulations in the spring, when there's a more complete supply picture, because there's yet, you know, more rain to be had, so, at least as of right now. Because the prior emergency order was going to expire in February, they just extended it. So that's where it is right now. And then also, I wanted to let everyone know that, we talked about this last, last year during strategic planning, and I think occasionally, with some of you, some of you individually after that, the, the Admin Services Department is working on what they call a chart of accounts conversion. So it's just our accounting system, the numbering scheme, to, to, to group them in, in ways that improve the usability and reporting functions in our, in our finance system. And on February 18th, Admin Services will be closed, and so basically, they're updating the accounting system that day, so they can't really do any transactions. So on that particular day, on the 18th, they'll be closed, but all the other departments in the city will remain open to the public. And if, the two, the two main things that people use Admin Services for is either to pay utility bills or renew business licenses. And if people need to pay utility bills or renew business licenses on that day, on February 18th, payments can either be dropped in the green mailbox, which is in the front of City Hall, like they can any other time of the year. And then utility bills can also be paid directly online, with direct pay. So that, if, if somebody absolutely has to pay on that day, those options are still available. And then the Ministry of Services will reopen the following Monday, which is February 22nd. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Albid. Have any questions from the council? Well, seeing none, thank you. I'll, I'll go over to Assistant's business. Ms. Alderman?
This is on Mr. Albid's report. I'm just a little confused, because Carrie Pajon sent a notice that, I believe it was the Design Review Committee was canceled for the date he said that there was one, so I'm just confused. So it was about five o'clock today.
Okay, thank you. Do we need a clarification on that, or are you still confused?
So I'm looking at it right now. It's actually the Planning Commission meeting for February 16th.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll come back to city council reports. Councilmember Schimmel?
Despite my poor health and probably exacerbating it, I did attend the Chamber of Commerce dinner, which was a really good event, on January 30th. And that's about all I've been able to bring myself to for the last two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Getwell? Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Mayor Moore. I get to be the bearer of bad news tonight, may be aware of this, but this is an SCTA report, and we were very happy because we had a subcommittee, typical subcommittee working with electeds, with Supervisor Rabbit, our ABAG heavy hitter, and Councilmember McKenzie, our MTC heavy hitter, working with Councilmember Miller from Petaluma, trying to find funding for that last piece of the Narrows and, just south of Petaluma. And in a difficult year, when the governor decided that the budget would include essentially maintenance, no real new construction, they actually did find the money for it. Everybody was very pleased, they were very happy. Unfortunately, the final assessment of the budget came in tighter, a lot tighter. And from my best information, this is a good, fair assessment, it's just when the numbers actually came in, it was a little tighter than comfortable, and that was cut. So we're back to square one, and it'll be very frustrating with all the other works that have been done. We have most of the other pieces done. Now, some of those lanes will essentially be roped off, because the last piece that connects the two isn't quite there. So it's a tough year for that. But, but we're, we're ahead, and I hope that once this is done, maybe it'll be incentive to have our friends in Marin do their side, and finally, in our lifetime, hopefully, the Narrows will be just an unpleasant memory.
If the governor comes back and may revise, and there magically appears more money? Is there a possibility?
Well, I'm sure there are... Well, I'm sure there are people who've had higher pay levels than us, certainly working very hard on that, you can be sure of that, just reading the tea leaves from the presentation, I don't know if it's likely, but it's possible. If, if through adjustment, if a magic windfall does, which happens sometimes when you're putting things together, I think this is something they would be happy to support. I think that's why it was included this year, because it's needed, logical, and we as a county have certainly done our part. We've done more than our share of it, so it's one of those working together things.
Thank you.
So, cross your fingers.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
I attended the North Bay League of California Cities Executive Division meeting on January 28th and there was a really interesting presentation about election results. And they had a gentleman come and talk about voting and, you know, what happens and how, it was really all about numbers and things and it was really very, very interesting. So, he said, really, the key thing is stay tuned this year, the numbers could get very interesting in some of these elections. I also attended the Water Advisory Committee and as the city manager reported, our water in our area is doing pretty good. Lake Mendocino is at 100% and Lake Sonoma is at 95% and they're doing minimal releases. And as Damian pointed out, Mendocino also gets snowfall, so they're kind of keeping their eye on that because you don't want to release too much, yet you don't want to release water that you may need in the, in the spring and summer months. So, they're, I think they're doing a lot better at working together to determine that. I think it used to be really hard and fast and they just released it, so it sounds like a lot of folks are working together. There's different models saying we will have rain in February and some say we won't, so who knows? And then the only other thing that's kind of in the wings is they're working on the budget right now and we probably will be seeing drafts, draft rates next month. Unfortunately, because of all of this conservation and stuff, it's likely that the rates will go up because they have to cut the, the water. Looks like they'll be cutting it from 51,000 acre feet down to 41,000, so that will impact if we're using less water. But we'll see what kind of magic the technical group can come up with what, what's happening, but more to come on that. And last but not least, I did go to the chamber awards night and who knew that Councilmember Skilman had such talent with her singing?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey. I too did attend that council, our chamber dinner and I do believe Councilmember Skilman had practiced that particular display multiple times. Very well done. I will never be singing at one of those events again. But it was a very nice, very nice Chamber of Commerce recognition dinner for the hard work that is put in the community. And again, congratulations to Councilmember Landman for Citizen of the Year. Well deserved. I also attended the open house put on by Assemblymember Levine here in the Cattati Police Room. That was very nice. Had a nice little crowd there and it was nice to be able to have one-on-ones with the constituents and community members and Assemblymember Levine. So, that was encouraging. And then we, we'll leave it at that. And if there's nothing further, we will adjourn the meeting at 9:34. Thank you.